Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Mary.
We're going to ask everyone to find their way to their seats. And we're again, want to welcome all of you to our city council meeting tonight. And particularly we want to welcome those folks out there in the room. The CSEA, we're happy to have you on this evening. Let's hear it, everybody, from CSEA. Okay, so this city could not be where it is today if it wasn't for the men and women that work hard to bring this city back from almost total catastrophe. So we're very, very happy. Just a couple of things before we begin. As you know, at the end of the city council meeting itself, after the final vote, we open up the meeting to the good and welfare. And it's important that if you have something to share with us, that that is the opportunity to be able to share on whatever subject or issue that you think is important that we should hear. But we want to hear from you. And that is really the time to really let us know what you think is going on. And again, another thing to remind everyone is that we have a three-minute limit on the comments and the questions you might have. And finally, what we expect from everyone is the kind of decorum that we expect at any government function. And that means decorum being respectful of one another. We may not agree with what one says or the other says, but they have a right to be able to talk. They have a right to be able to air their feelings without noises or bullying or what it is. And so I'm going to make sure that we try to stick to that kind of decorum. And again, finally, I have to say that any time that we have the opportunity to hear from you is a good night for us. It's a good city council meeting. And with that, folks, I will turn our meeting over to our Mr. Fraser.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. From the long hall, Councilman Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Rahm.
Yeah.
President Torres.
Here.
But the record in case of presence of City Manager Jack Schirring and Corporation Council Rob XTC, an absolute player.
I'm going to ask the CSEA President John Moody to lead us tonight in the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, we have very, very many things going on in Long Beach right now that are on our minds, that we're concerned about. We want to also thank everyone for their cooperation in being able to bring the city to the next level of safety that we believe we need to do. And that is with the reengineering of the beach. And as you know, we are working on the bulkheads, particularly in the areas where there are no bulkheads at all. And we need to protect our utilities as we learn very, very severely that we must do in case of an emergency. And with that, I would like our city manager to give us our votes.
Okay, taking a look at our public works update this week, many of the folks making this stuff happen are here with us, and we appreciate that. City's water distribution crew will be installing new water services and mark out new services in the West End. Beach maintenance will continue with renovations of the Maple Firehouse, levels of the beach, and other whole, most of other things to prepare for the beach season. Additionally, street maintenance garden crew will be on Park Avenue, Broadway, Maple and Shore Road, cleaning and matching center halls. While the asphalt masonry crew is out working on Grand Boulevard and Park Avenue with the World War I monument, while we're preparing roads from water sewer service repairs. Sanitation will be on a normal schedule. Contractual roadwork is continuing on Harley Avenue. And National Grid and TSG are doing utility replacements on Ocean Beach so that the city can receive local road resurfaces. As a reminder, please visit the city's website to see what's known as being clean, to accommodate the cleaning crew by moving crews off that lot. As you might know, the Army Corps of Engineering project, Doom project, has begun, worth now in Long Beach decades in the making. The city has worked closely with Senator Kaminsky, Assemblywoman Miller, Legislative Board, and Senator Schubert's office to ensure that any inconvenience residents may face this summer will be minimized while also allowing the projects to proceed in the timely manner of measures put in place to protect the city from future storms. Throughout this process, our administration and the city council will continue to stand up for Long Beach. As a reminder, though, there will be a couple of areas temporarily cordoned off by specific jetties while work is going on. One hundred percent of our beaches will be open this summer. A work schedule is currently on the city's website. Also, mark your calendars at the Army Corps of Engineers and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We'll be hosting a public meeting to provide information to Long Beach residents regarding the beach protection project right here in this room on April 20th at 7:30 p.m. In the flyer, a special thank you to Senator Kaminsky's office for working with us to make this meeting happen. The countdown is on, we're just eighteen days away from the city's carryout bag ordinance taking effect on Earth Day, April 22nd. Please visit longbeachny.gov/bags for all the details of this environmentally conscious legislation. Later this spring, Long Beach will host the first Pride Weekend on June 19th through 11th. All details of the weekend are still being finalized, and in coming days, we'll be publicizing the website, which will have all of the preliminary info, including Friday, small private events, including a prayer service and a youth event. Saturday at Wardwalk 5K in the morning on Beach Day. And Sunday, which is, I think, the focus of the weekend, a vendor fair, a parade, and a concert. Once all of the detail is finalized, every household in Long Beach will receive information in the mail paid for by the LGBT network. And of course, the city will use all of our communications channels to make that word available as well. Earlier this month, the City of Long Beach distributed revised employee policy manuals to all its employees. The goal of the city is to promote a workplace that's free from any kind of discrimination and harassment while promoting equal treatment, equal employment opportunities. To this end, the manual now includes protection for transgender employees from workplace discrimination. As per resolution the city council passed June 21st, 2016, this revision ensures that no discrimination shall be tolerated when it comes to employees' gender identity, self-image, appearance, or expression. At our last city council meeting, there was a hearing regarding the community development block grant funds, in which it was brought up the fact that President Trump has been planning to eliminate the entire program. Since that meeting, the city council and I submitted a letter to President Trump strongly urging him to refrain from eliminating the community development block grant program, which would be unprecedented and unconscionable. If the program is eliminated as proposed, the City of Long Beach would lose more than $400,000 in funding to support critical services for our most vulnerable residents. Why, ultimately, would we lose $13 million right out of our 30 million programs? CDVG funding is distributed to various nonprofits to provide critical public services to active populations. Some of these programs include drop training, senior youth programs, homeless assistance, residential rehabilitation funds to help local homeowners devastated by Superstorm Sandy, improvements to local parks, playgrounds, and community centers, upgrades to bathrooms and buses to make them easier accessible, and beautification efforts such as tree planting. We've also issued this letter on the city website. City will hold its annual Easter icon on Saturday, April 8th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. near our creation field. Visit longbeachny.gov for more details. And finally, the VFW and the city will be hosting an event on Saturday, April 9th, at 3:00 p.m. to commemorate the 100th anniversary of America entering World War I. Ceremony will be held at Betterland Plaza on Grand Boulevard and West Park Avenue. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, thank Mr. Schirring. With that, we're going to go right into our meeting. Mr. Fraser.
I am one of the resolution authorizing an amendment and extension to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Long Beach and the Long Beach Civil Service Employees Association.
Okay, so a very quick overview. First, I'd like to thank CSEA President John Moody and his leadership team, as well as Corporation Council Rob XTC and Jim LaCaruca, who all together worked on this contract extension collaboratively. And just to lay out a little bit of it, the city would like to thank the CSEA for the outstanding work that they do every day through in-house projects and important labor concessions. The CSEA has helped replenish the city's reserve funds, allowing tax increases to be kept over at a minimum over the last few years. In the aftermath of Superstorm Sandy, we were able to do a significant amount of in-house infrastructure work that generated approximately $5 million in cost savings through federal recovery reimbursements. They covered straight time, overtime, and equipment costs. Through good times and bad, the CSEA is a true partner and a great asset to both residents and the administration alike. Simply put, it's been a great experience partnering together, and this contract extension is a symbol of that. Going to the meat and potatoes, on Wednesday, March 29th, CSEA members ratified the proposed fiscal year 2018 through '25 union contract by a margin of 175 to 11, a 94% approval and a 90% turnout for the vote, both historic approvals. This agreement, we believe, is fair to both taxpayer and the union, as the CSEA received an eight-year contract, including reasonable salary increases every year from 18 to 19 through '24 to '25, along with numerous requested ancillary benefits in return for accepting a 0% raise in place of a 2.5% raise for 2017, '18, providing a cost savings of over $400,000 in the first year. Additionally, this contract includes healthcare contributions for new employees and future qualified retirees, representing a cost savings of over $2,500 for family coverage and $1,100 for individual coverage for each new potential hire. Simply put, we recommend to the city council this contract extension, and thank the hardworking members of the CSEA for doing a terrific job for the city, for partnering with the city in good times and bad, and working collaboratively so that we know we will have great labor relations for years to come.
Thank you. It's always a great day when both the management, the city, and labor can work together for the benefit of the entire city. With that, I'd like to ask the council to comment on this item, the first item that we had on our agenda.
Sure.
Mr. Rahm.
I would just like to send my appreciation to everyone out here, whether you're inside or outside. We all know that it's the workforce that makes the city shine. And you're here every day for us, and you're here every day for the residents here, most, and our visitors. And on a personal note, when I was on strike last two years ago, you were there for me. We picked it together, and that always means a lot to me. And you are my brothers and sisters. And it's an honor to be up here to vote for an eight-year extension with the hard work of your leadership. I'm excited for it, and I'm excited to vote along with 175 other members that also approved this contract. So once again, I just want to thank everyone personally here for everything you do. You are what make the city work, so thank you.
Great. I'd like to ask, are there any comments from the public? Is there anyone that would like to share their feelings?
Thank you. I just want to take a second to echo some of the citizens' concerns. I want to commend the negotiating team from the city as well as the CSEA. Some of you know I already, I am a CSEA member myself. And for both sides, reaching a deal that provides increases for the hardworking city workforce and service, as well as provides protections that our taxpayers need as well. So I want to convince everybody that if we reach a deal, we can afford to support them.
Great. And if there are no comments, any other comments?
No, just certain some of those.
Okay, very good, very good. And okay, so we'll go to the public, and we have comments from the public on this first item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. John? John? Okay.
First of all, I'd just like to, James Todd is 95 and is old street in this great city. First of all, I'd like to just thank our city council, and I stand in honor of celebrating this historic event on today as a 20-plus union member, but also I stand as the cheerperson of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that is Memphis, many don't know why and what he was doing there. They don't know that he died in a struggle for the right of public workers to have a union. Throughout his life, King stood for union rights. His teachings about the rights of labor can serve us all well in our own trying times when those rights sometimes are under fresh assault. One of King's phrases that we rarely hear is this, "All labor has dignity." King spoke these words to a mass meeting of over 10,000 people in Memphis on March 18th, 1968, in the midst of a strike of 1,300 black sanitation workers. Some 40% of these workers were so poor that they received welfare benefits even though they worked 60 hours a week. Speaking of both sanitation workers in Memphis and working poor across the country, King said, "You're not reminding not only Memphis, but you're reminding the nation that it is a crime for poor people to live in this rich nation and receive starvation wages." But the strike was not just about pay. Let it be known everywhere, King declared that along with wages and all of the security that you are struggling for, you are also struggling for rights to organize and reorganize. The key issues for the Memphis strikers were that their demand that the City of Memphis grant collective bargaining rights and the collective collection of union dues. The very two items that Governor Scott Walker targeted in Wisconsin, like city officials in Memphis want to know, that if you can say no to bargaining rights and dues collection, you can kill a union. I'm so happy that Martin Luther King, I celebrate his life today. The man is gone, but his life lives on in me and many others. I'm so happy that I have a president and union officials like my president, who is one of the hardest presidents that I've ever known and ever had an opportunity to work with. As I sat home for four weeks, the sickest that I've ever been in my life with pneumonia, after leaving the hospital, I thought I had a cold for two weeks.
Okay. Thank you again. Mr. Fraser.
Hey, gentlemen, we're down to item number two, which is the resolution authorizing the city manager's extension to a contract for rental affordable residential trails for the Ocean Beach Park.
Okay, after the damage caused by Superstorm Sandy, the city can build 585 fine compensation and the summer, the city will apply affordable restrooms, including those that are in need. Funding is being provided from the public to strengthen funding from CSEA.
Great. Thank you, Jack. And do we have any comments from the public? I'm sorry, from the council, from the president council here on item number two. Okay, do we have any comments from the public on item number two? Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the next.
It brings a resolution authorizing the city manager and city control to transfer funds to the 2016-2017 budget.
Right, every year in order to prepare for the voters' budget cycle, the resolutions are placed in the general, given the city manager and city controller are ready to transfer unexpanded funds to the debt in the fiscal year.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the council on this item number three, on item number five? Any questions, folks, from the audience on the item number three regarding our budget? Okay.
All right, on to the voting. Stop with item number two, resolution authorizing the city manager's extension to a contract for rental affordable residential trails for Ocean Beach Park.
Just move it down to the side.
How much do you say?
The side.
How much?
Glory, I think, five.
Yes.
And for Mandel.
Yes.
And for Moore.
Yes.
And for President Rahm.
Yes.
City manager, one of the personnel reporters, the fellow that City Clerk, who made a motion close to me.
I'll make the call.
Jackie?
How about?
Glory, I think, five. And for Mandel.
Yes.
And for Moore.
Yes.
And for President Rahm.
Yes.
Yes. With that, folks, brings our city council meeting to an end, and now we enter our good and welfare portion of our meeting tonight. And again, just as a reminder, there's a three-minute limit on comments and questions that you might have. There may not be an answer that we can give you tonight, depending on whether or not it's a legal issue that we can answer, or maybe we don't even, we may not have any information to give you at this time. So I hope you'll be able to leave us information so we can get back to you. And with that, we will begin our good and welfare with Mr. Ronald McHenry. Ronald McHenry, you're here.
Hi.
Great, great, welcome. It was good to see you.
Wasn't expecting to be up here so quick, being here that whole ass last time. Ronald McHenry, resident of Long Beach. I came just up here to first just commemorate Dr. Martin Luther King, you know, and all that he did for us. James Todd came up here and said how he fought for union workers. That's one of the reasons why he died, because, you know, they died because he was a revolutionary and he did equal rights, all of us. And about two weeks ago, the North Park community gathered here with concerns of gentrification, which is in the comprehensive plan. And we were hoping to have had a meeting by now, because a lot of people have so many concerns, especially with, you know, four gentrification projects already happening in Long Beach. And we know Dr. King rolled over his ribs to see the sort of things that have already happened in this area in Long Beach, especially because he came here, right, for the community. And, you know, to talk about taxes and what this project will do to this area, and what sort of resolution we could come to about affordability. Again, I think since then, the meetings, about 15 meetings or more, and, you know, affordability is different. We know everybody finds it differently. But I was told $50,000, and I don't know if that's the income or what the situation is. There's so many questions, and I just like clarification. Another thing is, I've been around Long Beach, especially the North Park area, and I know Jack said taxes won't go up concerning this plan, but taxes are already so high, so many people are being, or already leaving their homes in the North Park area. So I don't know what the council could do to make sure that citizens aren't removed from their homes, especially with a new project like the comprehensive plan. So many concerns to talk about. Why not focus on the infrastructure of the city after Hurricane Sandy? Why not focus on a hospital that the city can afford to pay for? And why focus on such a plan while other things I feel are more pertinent to tackle? And with that said, I just feel like, I hope this, it sounds like gentrification, even though a lot of people are saying that this plan doesn't point to it, it sounds like a plan that's moving people out, as Dr. King rolled over his ribs again, to a situation that's going to push a man out, a working man, being that doesn't have the size person to live in town, so poor to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all things that we are very concerned about, too. We've even discussed having specifically a meeting with the North Park area to discuss these concerns. With that, you know, I think that what we'll do is that we will, please stay with us towards the end of the meeting, so we can talk to you a little bit more about that. Thank you again, Mr. Fraser. Okay, our next person is Ms. Jackie Odom. Jackie? Welcome, Ms. Odom, it's good to see you.
Good evening, Ms. Jackie Odom. I'm sort of like following behind Ronald. And my first question would be, what is the status of the comprehensive plan? We are still awaiting a follow-up. I was promised at the last council meeting that I would give you a follow-up on the comprehensive plan as far as the North Park area is concerned, because there are some areas that's in the comprehensive plan that is not clear, and we feel like that they're not being addressed. Some of our sites are the AMOK Center, the churches, which will be Crystal Light, which is their Baptist church, New Light, and Evangel. So that's a big concern with us, also from Pine, Town, Pine Housing, and Child Park Homes. Those people are concerned over their living. I know Pat was supposed to set a date with me, so I'm still waiting for that date or follow-up for us to discuss some of these things. I know you want to move on forward, and I know you want to go into zoning. So have you set a date for that meeting for zoning, or are we still working on the comprehensive plan?
We have not finalized the meeting. I know that there have been difficulties for many of us to be able to be here when everyone to be here. We're still working on being able to conclude a date in town for this meeting, but we do plan to have. We are discussing it very seriously, and it should happen shortly.
Okay, and my next concern is when we had the last inclement weather, a rain, and we had that terrible flooding on Pine Street. I know we have a ticked back bow there, but it doesn't seem to be effective. To me, this seems to be an emergency and something that needs to be addressed immediately because people are losing cars, and they're always flooded out. And we've been talking about this for years and years and years. And it doesn't seem to be an issue or a concern that needs to be addressed.
Ms. Odom, I know that that's been an issue for probably decades, right? And that's why that we have the Critical Infrastructure Protection Project, a $20 million project slated to go target the center of the city. I'm sure you're quite familiar with the project, and we're moving as fast as we can in the interim. What's frustrating for all of us, whether it be in North Park or anywhere in the city, is there's no magic button that our public works department can press in order to prevent flooding in the interim. I've driven through all of those streets and even not been able to drive through those streets right when there's that heavy rain, and we all share that frustration.
Okay, thank you very much. But I just hope we will consider the North Park area and the flooding in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still very, very concerned about the flooding. Obviously, Friday night, I received calls from residents as well about the flooding on this Pine Street. And this is a very serious concern because, once again, people are losing their cars, and we understand that because of the income of individuals, it's not that easy to provide. project slated to go target the center of the city. I'm sure you're quite familiar with the project, and we're moving as fast as we can in the interim. What's frustrating for all of us, whether it be in North Park or anywhere in the city, is there's no magic button that our Public Works Department can press in order to prevent flooding in the interim. I've driven through all of those streets and even not been able to drive through those streets right when there's that heavy rain. We all share that frustration.
Okay, thank you very much. But I just hope we will consider the North Park area and the flooding in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Yeah, I just, I'm still, I'm still very, very concerned about the flooding. Obviously, Friday night, I received calls from residents as well about the flooding on this Pine Street. And this is a very serious concern because, once again, people are losing their cars. And we understand that because of the income of individuals, it's not that easy to just say, "Okay, I'll wait for insurance, then I can go ahead and get a rental or get a car." People rely on this for work and for income. And so this is, this is really, this has to be a priority at this point. We understand that we're waiting for the other plan, critical plan. We know that that's in place, and we're happy about all of those things. But there has to be something that we have to do now to act to protect all of our residents, whether it be in North Park or in the Canals area, because this is a pressing issue.
Thank you.
Doctor, just, I just wanted to respond to one of your other questions. You had asked whether the zoning portion of the plan had started yet. My understanding is that the zoning portion doesn't start until the comprehensive plan is passed or on to the next portion of it. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, none of that would happen until the meeting with the North Park community took place again, which is something I was about to ask about last time.
So that was the last one?
Yeah, okay.
That was it.
So it has not, it has not, I mean, it hasn't happened yet, and it will until the [inaudible].
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Odom. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the council on this issue? Okay, our next person is Mr. Brian Brash. Welcome, Brian. You still here? Yes. Good to see you, Brian.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to say, you know, thank you for the CSE contract, one of the hardest-working group of people that are out here. There's a few things tonight I'd like to spark with to go over. You know, I think my wife is sending an email to everybody about as far as the bathrooms. There's issues with the bathrooms. We're trying to keep all concession stands open. Here's a picture of the bathrooms. If everyone wants to take a date, we show it to them. What time the bathrooms are closed at? The bathrooms have to be open for the concession stands to be open. We were shut down on Sunday at five o'clock. I let's get open at sunset, which is seven thirty. I don't think it's a crime to have the bathrooms be open at sunset this time of year. Last two weeks ago, we shut down at three o'clock in the afternoon. I'm not going to pay that, you know, services to the water health where they come down there and say, "Hey, you know, you don't have a bathroom open." I'm sure the city wouldn't pay me that. At this point, we were just fighting open. There's a lot of people that are coming out. They have to have the long winter, have cabin fever. They want to come up and use the boardwalk after work, and they should be entitled to use the board, you know, the bathroom, whether it's on Cran, or Lincoln, or here. And that's what they should have. I mean, there's a lot of people, I see people going to the bathroom on the, on the boardwalk on the side of the building. It's not right. It's that time of year. People should have the right to do that. But when I was young, you know, in my eighteen, twenty, twenty twenties, I liked water for the city of Long Beach. We would always issue the key, and we simply did a private sweep of the bathrooms, and we locked them. I don't think it's a crime that we get these bathrooms keys and be able to lock it. I mean, we spent quite a bit of money developing these concession stands, and I'm still looking to spend more money developing concession. That, that's one of the problems that we're having. So I think sunset's a fair time this time of year. It's evil. People look to get out of the house and use the boardwalk. Come home, you know, go for a ride, go for a walk, and do it. The next thing that I'm on to is the Pride of the Beach, which I love the Pride of the Beach. I look forward to it. Looking forward to the event. I hope it's a nice, beautiful weekend, and everyone makes money in the whole town, the city of Long Beach. But are you going to get a liquor license? Does anybody have an answer? So we don't, still don't know if there's a liquor license coming for them? Anybody? Okay. Well, at the end of the day, you know, we would deny a liquor license, and we would deny one. If they have the rights to sell liquor on the beach that weekend because of VIP tents and everything else, you know, Rick ties itself, which right in front of us. We should be entitled to apply for a license for the nine, ten, and eleven, the same as they are. We should have, you know, a three-day license, just like they are. And that's all we're saying. It's not right that they would get it and we don't get it. You think that's all I really understand? I could sit up here for hours, but please, that's it. And I hopefully they will get some answers to. I look forward to my wife and myself servicing the town, you know. I really don't have to come up here to have problems about bathrooms and other stuff that's, you know, not here. It's just simple stuff that can easily be avoided. I look forward to it, working hard and having a relationship with the town, and I do. Well, thank you very much for your time. Now, good night.
Thanks, Brian. We're going to get back to you on these issues, okay? We are concerned. And again, we appreciate that you brought them up to us here, but we will have to get back to you on the bathroom issues. As far as the liquor on the beach, if you load it, that's it. We just...
You know, as a resident, we have a quick comment regarding the bathroom, and it's relatively easy to issue. It's, you know, it's a great problem to have, right? It's the winter. Technically, it's the winter season. The city's always had winter hours and summer hours, and now we have, you're doing what we've asked you to do, which is to try to reopen and open in the spring. And so we've asked Public Works to look to reschedule the employee who closes the bathroom, and they're going to be doing that, to reschedule later in the afternoon. Trick is, incidentally...
Trick?
The trick is, incidentally, as you may or may not know, that Public Works, they're going to be, that means the bathroom will be opened that day, that time of day, every day, regardless of whether you're opening or not. Again, that you're trying to open on days that are nice weather, right, and probably less so on days...
Jack, I'm going to just reopen seven days a week. You have the Army Corps project up and down that beach there, where there's people working there, people are going to be looking at it. And at the end of the day, you know, I found it was construction to fund until the late weekend, to be closed down and keep that place open seven days a week. I was told by an ancient lady, a lady who cleans it, she told me to not just reopen at six o'clock. You know what? Six o'clock, I said, you're going forward at this time of year. We got to stay open at sunset, which is seven thirty, sir. And I think that is that when you close the boardwalk at five o'clock at night, and you saw the traffic was up there this Sunday, I know people, guys, beach people, some of you use the boardwalk quite often. At the end of the day, there's people that want to use those bathrooms, not just local tax-paying people, people coming from out of town. If you go to Joey Street State Park, they have bathrooms still there. We have people who can't use the bathrooms here. They're running down, going to the bathroom on the side of the building. They don't use the boardwalk. There's older people that need the bathroom. Geez, I'm getting older myself, my friend. I need to use the bathroom. Okay, yeah, okay.
That's great. I know that Public Works will be working on that.
Great, thank you very much. You're so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Brash. Our next person is Mr. Marcus Finkler.
I'll pass.
Okay. Okay, our next person is Malik Armstrong. Malik Armstrong. Welcome. Just need you to state your name on the mic for the record. Welcome, Malik.
Good evening. My name is Malik, and I'm a resident of Long Beach and currently a member of one of the local churches here in the North Park community. I am a very active member of my church, and I have a great relationship with many of our members and many residents in the community. I have heard a lot about the comprehensive plan that we face in Long Beach, particularly in the North Park community. Many of the residents I have spoken to have expressed concerns with the possibility, excuse me, the possibility being displaced with this community development that, and that trouble me. I have a grandmother who owns a house here, and with her, she had to sell her home because the city needed her property, or she had to sell because the city, she loved so much, had become so accessible to live in, that she had to sell her home to losing, excuse me, before losing. I have those friends who are working with the department, contracts, if we sold, and they become displaced. If anything, this is happening, what will happen to our churches and to the community. I would like to act as you strongly consider these things before we report with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Malik. We will be addressing these issues very shortly. And thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Malik, for coming out tonight, and I just wanted to publicly congratulate you for being accepted to the Touski University. I'm very, very proud of you. I'm glad you're coming out tonight and speaking. It's very important as a young person that you give voice to things that concern you. So congratulations again.
Okay, our next person is Mr. Mark Vantus.
I think I mispronounced your name. Vantus. Do you have the list?
Hi, I'm Mark Vantus, resident of Long Beach and a prior overlooker of the beach. I was going to address the council regarding the construction. However, I remember that you guys are having a separate meeting on April twentieth. However, I just wanted to state that I only found out about this two days, three days ago from an email from a city engineer, and I just think that it would have been fair to consider the businesses that are going to be affected by the construction, especially since they're closing the beaches in front of my restaurant, which is now going to be a huge eye sore. Equipment going to be stored there, construction rubble, and I mean, I'm going to lose all my business from the weekends because you guys are going to close the beaches for the weekends. You're not going to have concerts on Wednesday, no movie nights on Saturday. It's, you know, we survived Sandy, we rebuilt, we came back, we stuck with Long Beach, and we opened up for two more years, and now this is coming in on a third year back. It's cutting our legs off. I mean, we're a seasonal business run by my family, and it's, I know, I'm all for the progress to get it done. It has to get done, but I think that at least we should have been considered in the process and, you know, at least give us a discussion. You know, I'm getting mixed signals from everybody I call. I call Senator Kaminsky's office, he says it's on the, it's on the city, it's on him, it's on this guy, that, and I, I just want it to be included in the process because now it's really going to be detrimental for my, my business, especially since it's only a seasonal business. And, you know, I just feel like we got left out, and we support the city as well. We pay licensing fees. We give a service to the community by providing space to enjoy good food and nice sights, and people come back, people come from all over just to come into our restaurant. And now I think it's, it's going to be a shame because the possibility is that I might not be able to open this year. Doing all the business I'm going to lose. And how can I plan for business? How can I plan for inventory? How can I plan for staffing? I don't know what's going to happen. Is my end of the beach going to be ghost town, and nobody's coming out? And I just felt that it shouldn't be fair enough that we could have had a sit-down in a dress, you know, spoken to, like we are part of the community as well as everybody else.
You're absolutely right, Mark. And I just wanted to bring your attention to the meeting on April the twentieth, where there'll be a town hall meeting on that specifically, and it will be run by the Army Corps Engineering. I think that this is the opportunity that it might have to be, perhaps, the input that we need. Part of that, we knew when we voted on this that eventually, this is a difficult thing for us to get to. It's a very unique thing that we need to do, and I know it's difficult, but I can only tell you that the town hall meeting on the twentieth is an important meeting for us to be in.
Okay, I appreciate your time, and just wanted you guys to consider that, you know, it does affect our personal, family lives. We are doing everything we can to try and mitigate it affecting the whole community. I'm sorry that your business is going to be right in front of that spot, but the one thing that you did say, which I think is incorrect, is they won't be working on the weekends. Is that correct?
Right, at Memorial Day.
At Memorial Day. So for the summertime, they won't be working on the weekend, right? Well, they own the beach that, that area for the weekends at least, or will they do something, maybe bring a concert there just to get people over to the area? I think maybe for safety reasons, they wouldn't be able to, but...
Commissioner, maybe you can shed some light on it?
Sure. Just a couple of things. As far as the late notice, we got notified back in November.
Welcome, Commissioner. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. We got noticed back in November that the schedule for this project was changing. And again, this is a reminder to everybody, this is a New York State D E C project, or actually Army Corps of Engineering project that's under contract with New York State D E C, and they really have full control over this. We got back, when they originally presented it to the community back in June of two thousand sixteen, they, we were told, or the residents were told, the businesses, that this project would not begin for August of this year. What happened is they moved this project, they made great progress in the town of Amsted, they have an issue with the pipe new clovers, so now they will be in Long Beach, and we were notified November that they moved in April. Soon as, and that was my first week here, as soon as we were notified by that, we sent off a letter to the Army Corps and to New York State D E C, saying that the schedule they're proposing is completely unacceptable as a due disruption to the beach. And that was also based on the order of the way they were doing things. Along with the council's support with Senator Kaminsky and Senator woman Miller and legislator Ford, there are multiple meetings with, with the Army Corps trying to limit the areas that they work in. Unfortunately, there's only three access points that they contract with this size of equipment to get to the beach, and they need to work on one west, going on the west side, on the east side, actually do that. There's been numerous articles in, in the Herald and the Newsday, we've been on Bios News, we've been on Channel Twelve News, we've even been on CBS doing this. We finally got notice from the Army Corps that they were starting the next, you know, that next day, and that's why you got the late notice from the, we, I said, we have to put something together with these people that live right in vicinity, have businesses right in vicinity of these two access points, that this thing is starting tomorrow. And that's how quickly we found out when they finally finalized the schedule. So we're doing everything we can. The council's been very supportive of our actions in trying to limit the areas that they work on. A couple of things, more to your point, and the work should be done by two, two-thirty from Monday to Friday, and there will be no work on the weekends once, once late, once Memorial Day comes. In addition, I'm presently working with the chamber groups, with the civic groups that do the movie nights, to pick locations that'll be safe to do the movie nights on, and while not involved in the concert part of it, I'm sure folks are going to be looking for that, and I will still try to spread the movie nights out so that we can get fairly close to you. Because there are only going to be a small area of actual work, so there may not be a reason not to do the movie night by, by your establishment. I don't think there's anything else that I can add on that, but that's where we're at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Vantus. So we appreciate your comments and your concerns, okay? And we hope that folks can come out to the meeting with the Army Corps engineer on the April twentieth. Our next person again is Gina Brash. Ms. Gina Brash, are you here? Yes. How are you? Welcome.
Gina Brash, seven forty West Bay Drive. So I care to speak about two things this evening. Number one, I sent you all emails. I hope you received them in regards to the fire marshal receipts from last year. As you know, the bathrooms were not up to the Nassau County Fire Marshal code, and we had to pay for that out of our own pockets. We were told last year that the fire commander, D P W, that that money, that money would be refunded to us. And unfortunately, we're working with Corporation Council, but they said that due to budget that it cannot be refunded to us this year, and that any portions of it can be refunded to us next year, hopefully. So that's my first concern, is us and the city to pay for this, and it's just, you know, we just need to know if it's going to be refunded, when it's going to be refunded, because we were told it would be. My second matter is I'm speaking on regards of beachside services, which is immobile vending of ice cream and all beverages from the beaches and boardwalks. We are in full support of the Army Corps project and know that Long Beach truly is it. But our mobile business will be tremendously affected this year. I met with Brad from Corporation Council, and he told me that he feels that it wouldn't be. So I decided to go down to the beach this afternoon and actually measure myself, so I can show all of you how dramatic these results will be. So I'm laughing at the beach, which is the same beach size as the boardwalk beaches running east and west. There's a twenty foot, there's twenty feet from the boardwalk going south to the snow fencing that is completely unvendable and blocked, therefore no one can use it. Then there's a forty-one foot, forty-one feet of snow fencing that would be used for a safety lane. That's totally sixty-one feet in beach area that's no longer vendable or usable to any patrons on these beaches. The distance from the snow fence to the high tide mark is sixty-five feet. Therefore, the beaches along the boardwalk are completely cut in half. Then we have the west end beaches and the east end beaches. I went to Pennsylvania. I measured ten feet buffer off the ramp because it would be possible to do the twenty feet that they have at the boardwalk. Then we marked out the forty-one feet for the safety road. The remaining beach for the west end beaches is twenty feet, twenty feet for patrons to use this summer. That leads up to our... she loved so much, had become so accessible to live in, that she had to sell her home for losing it, excuse me, before we did. I have those friends who are worried about their apartment contracts, they're being sold and they're becoming displaced. If these things were to happen, what will happen to our churches and to the community? I would like to ask that you strongly consider these things before we move forward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Malik. We will be addressing these issues very shortly. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Malik, for coming out tonight. And I just wanted to publicly congratulate you for being accepted to Koskebe University. I'm very, very proud of you. I'm grateful for coming out tonight and speaking. It's very important as a young person that you give voice to things that concern you. So congratulations again.
Okay, our next person is Mr. Mark Vangilis. I think I mispronounced your name.
Vangilis.
You have to listen.
Hi, I'm Mark Vangilis, resident of Long Beach and proprietor of Overlook at the Beach. I was going to address the council regarding the construction, however, I remember that you guys are having a separate meeting on the April 20th. However, I just wanted to state that I only found out about this two days, three days ago from an email from a city engineer. And I just think that it would have been fair to consider the businesses that are going to be affected by the construction, especially since they're closing the beaches in front of my restaurant, which is now going to be a huge eyesore. Equipment going to be stored there, construction rubble. And I mean, I'm going to lose all my business from the weekends because you guys are going to close the beaches for the weekends. You're not going to have concerts on Wednesday, no movie nights on Saturday. It's, you know, we survived Sandy, we rebuilt, we came back, we stuck with Long Beach and we opened up for two more years and now this is coming in on a third year back. It's cutting our legs off. I mean, we're a seasonal business run by my family and it's, I know, I'm hopeful the progress is beginning to come. It has to get done, but I think that at least we should have been considered in the process and, you know, at least give us a discussion. You know, I'm getting mixed signals from everybody I call. I call Senator Kaminsky's office, he says it's on the, it's on the city, it's on him, it's on this guy, that guy. I just want to be included in the process because now it's really going to be detrimental for my, my business, especially since it's only a seasonal business. And, you know, I just feel like we got left out and we support the city as well. We pay licensing fees, we, we give a service to the community by providing a space to enjoy good food and nice sights. And people come back, people come from all over just to come into our restaurant. And now I think it's, it's going to be a shame because the possibility is that I might not be able to open this year due to all the business I'm going to lose. And how could I plan for business? How could I plan for inventory? How could I plan for staffing when I don't know what's going to happen? Is my end of the beach going to be ghost town and nobody's coming out? And I just felt that it should be fair enough that we could have had a sit-down in a dress, you know, spoken to like we are a part of the community as well as everybody else.
You're absolutely right, Mark. And I, I just wanted to bring your attention to the meeting on April the 20th where there will be a town hall meeting on that specifically and it will be run by the Army Corps of Engineers. I think that this is the opportunity that we might have to be, have the input that we need. Part of that, we knew when we voted on this that eventually, this is a difficult thing for us to get through. It's a very meaningful thing that we need to do and I know it's difficult, but I can only tell you that the town hall meeting on the 20th is an important meeting for us to move to.
Okay, I appreciate your time and just wanted you guys to consider that, you know, it does affect our personal family lives. We, we are doing everything we can to try and mitigate it affecting the whole community. I'm sorry that your businesses would be right in front of that spot, but the one thing that you did say, which I think is correct, is they won't be working on the weekends. Is that correct?
Right, right after Memorial Day.
After Memorial Day. So for the summertime, they won't be working on the weekend, right?
Will they open the beaches that, that area for the weekends or at least, or will they do something, maybe bring a concert there just to get people over to the area?
I think maybe for safety reasons, they wouldn't be able to, but...
Commissioner, maybe you can shed some light on this?
Sure. Just a couple of things. As far as the late notice, we got notified back in...
Welcome, Commissioner. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. We got noticed back in November that the schedule for this project was changing. And again, this is a reminder to everybody, this is a New York State DEC project, or actually Army Corps Engineering Project that's under contract with New York State DEC. And they really have full control over this. We got back, when they originally presented to the community back in June of 2016, they, we were told, the residents were told, the businesses, that this project would not begin till August of this year. What happened is they moved this project. They made great progress in the town hamster, had an issue with the pipe new clovers. So now they moved it to Long Beach and we were notified November that they were moved in April. Soon as, and that was my first week here, as soon as we were notified by that, we sent off a letter to the Army Corps and to New York State DEC saying that the schedule they're proposing is completely unacceptable as a community disruption to the beach. And that was also based on the order of the way they were doing things. Along with the council's support with Senator Kaminsky and Senator Womack Villa and legislative board, there were multiple meetings with, with the Army Corps trying to limit the areas that they work in. Unfortunately, there's only three access points that they contract with this size of equipment to get to the beach. And they need to work on one's west, going on the west side, one on the east side, actually do that. There's been numerous articles in, in Herald, in Newsday, we've been on BIOS News, we've been on Channel 12 News, we've even been on CBS doing this. We finally got notice from the Army Corps that they were starting the next, you know, that next day. And that's why you got the late notice from the, we, I said, we have to put something together with these people that live right in vicinity and have businesses right in vicinity of these two access points that this thing is starting tomorrow. And that's how quickly we found out when they finally finalized the schedule. So we're doing everything we can. The council's been very supportive of our actions in trying to, to limit the areas that they work on. A couple of things. More to, to your point and, and the work should be done by 2:00, 2:30 from Monday to Friday and there will be no work on the weekends once, once late, once Memorial Day comes. In addition, I'm presently working with the chamber groups, with the civic groups that do the movie nights to pick locations that'll be safe to do the movie nights on. And while I'm not involved in the concert part of it, I'm sure Paul Ferentz will be looking for that and we'll still try to spread the movie nights out so that we can get fairly close to you. Because there only going to be a small area of actual work, so there may not be a reason not to do the movie night by, by your establishment. I don't know if there's anything else that you can add on that, but that's where we're at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Vangilis. We appreciate your comments and your concerns. Okay, and we hope that folks can come out to the, the meeting with the Army Corps Engineer on the, on April 20th. Our next person that we have is Gina Bradish. Ms. Gina Bradish, are you here? Yes. How are you? Welcome.
Gina Bradish, 740 West Bay Drive. So I care to speak on two things this evening. Number one, I sent you all emails. I hope you received them in regards to the fire marshal receipts from last year. As you know, the bathrooms were not up to the Nassau County Fire Marshal Code and we had to pay for that out of our own pockets. We were told last year that the fire plumber, DPW, had that funding, that money was used to fund it to us. And unfortunately, we're working with Corporation Council, but they said that due budget, that it cannot be refunded to us this year and that many portions of it can be refunded to us next year, basically. So that's my first concern is us and we want to make progress and it's just, you know, we just need to know if it's going to be refunded, when it's going to be refunded, because we were told it wouldn't be. My second matter is I'm speaking on regards of beachside services, which is immobile vending of ice cream and all beverages on the beaches and boardwalks. We are in full support of the Army Corps projects and know that Long Beach truly is it. But our mobile business will be tremendously affected this year. I met with Brad and Corporation Council and he told me that it feels that it wouldn't be. So I decided to go down to the beach this afternoon and actually measure myself so I can show all of you how dramatic these results will be. So I'm laughing at beach, which is the same beach size as the boardwalk beaches running east and west. There's a 20-foot, there's 20 feet from the boardwalk going south to the snow fencing that is completely unvendable and blocked, therefore no one can use it. Then there's a 41-foot, 41 feet of snow fencing that would be used for a safety lane. That's totally 61 feet in beach area. That's no longer vendable or usable to any patrons on these beaches. The distance from the snow fence to the high tide mark is 65 feet. Therefore, the beaches along the boardwalk are completely cut in half. Then we have the west end beaches and the east end beaches. I went to Pennsylvania. I measured 10 feet buffer off the ramp because it wouldn't be possible to do the 20 feet that they have at the boardwalk. Then we marked out the 41 feet for the safety road. The remaining beach for the west end beaches is 20 feet, 20 feet for patrons to use this summer. That means the Army Corps is using 71.83% of the west end beaches. So you still have to take into consideration New York Avenue is closed, half of Grand will be closed, half of Pennsylvania will be closed. The same thing at Neptune for the stadium, that and all the beaches that are going to be worked on with the Jets. So my question to all of you is because I do have contracts with the city, why should I have to pay full for when I'm only using a percentage of the beaches? And this is our livelihood. I'm supportive of everything, but I just need some kind of...
All right. With respect to the first point, Gina, you know, you've heard at the city position, you respect your request for a refund. And my advice to you is to not appreciate that point of view because it would be no good, or the city's, the public state's position on that topic. But I do encourage you to keep coming back and working for these issues in my role. It's actually happened, we're very anxious about it. And I also encourage you to bring the materials that we discussed and that you're still reiterating. All right? And as far as a little of the metrics you just mentioned, I'm out of the position right now because I haven't had the opportunity to research that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. We'll be getting back to you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, and with that, we have Roshan Cruz Jr. if Roshan is here. Roshan, welcome. Always good to see your folks come and share this. Welcome. Just need you to state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Roshan Cruz Jr., 360 South Street, resident of Long Beach. As a 12, a 12-year-old kid raised here in Long Beach, I know the what, the who, when, and the where. I know how things roll here. The last time I was here, I defended the MLK Center of it being torn down. But today is different. I'm not only supporting MLK, but I am also supporting my black community. Black, my black community is a united community where we never let nothing come in our way. Just like we don't want you to come tearing our community down, our community down. You've run some of our family and friends out of Long Beach and you're still trying to run us out, us black folks. This is not the outcome it's supposed to be. You say you love the city and you're saying you love this people. Show that you do. If you really do, why are you destroying our community? Love, Lord above knows I care for my people. Lord above knows that I care for my community. It is also hurtful to see my people and my community being broken up. You took so many homes just to build big businesses here. Are we next? That's the question I ask. If someone were to come and destroy your home, you will be mad. So let us be, we all are family like to, we are family to one another. The community is our home, just like you have your own home. Long Beach is our home. And we have come too far just to back down.
Thank you.
Beautifully stated. I see that you wrote everything down on your paper. It was really beautiful, Roshan, and I'm so proud of you as a 12-year-old coming to the meeting to talk about your community and to take a stand because you're really the future of this community. And so I'm just very, very proud of you and we'll do all that we can to protect you and your family and the community.
Thank you. And thank everyone for coming out tonight. And this brings our city council meeting in the Go to Welfare portion to an end. Get home safely. Good night.